I just started it. Hey, Tony, how are you?
I am good. How are you this evening?
Good. What do you mean? Give you what again?
Thank you. Thank you. Hi, Jackie.
Hello?
Hi there.
Hi, Tony, how are you?
Good about yourself tonight?
I'm good, thanks. From here, it looks like you're looking at the stars.
Yes, yes, I am. I'm actually living with them, you know.
How'd you get that background?
Actually, I stumbled on it when I was doing the setup for Zoom. One that comes up that says background, I just clicked on it. I was like, oh, okay. Yeah, I like it.
That's pretty cool.
Thank you.
It's really weird because I saw Tim earlier today. And I think the office was calling him. But the ringtone he has sounds like something from Star Trek. And I thought about you and your background. There's a theme going on here.
Yeah, he's got a very distinctive ringtone, that's for sure.
Yes, he does.
Let me see. Get my records out here. I'm all set. Hi, Mike, how you doing?
Good evening, everyone. Council President is having some technical difficulties. So I'm trying to get her into the meeting now.
Okay.
Hi there.
Hello.
Hello, how's it going, everyone?
Hi, Mike.
Good, good, Mike.
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
Hello. How you doing, Ken?
Good, good.
Hello. Hello, Mr. Schuster.
Hello, Councilman.
How are you, Ken?
Great day. How about you?
Wonderful day.
How you doing, Ken?
Hey, Michael.
Hey, Ken, thank you so much for the candy.
Oh, you're welcome.
What candy? I ain't getting no candy.
You're not thanking me for the pounds. I sent you some.
I don't need it anymore. I'm a diabetic. But that's good candy. Hey, how are you, Ms. Stevenson? Ms. Stevenson, you got my candy?
I do. I'm holding it up.
I'm coming to give my candy tomorrow.
Okay. Hello?
Hi.
Oh, my bad. Who's you saying hello to? How you know who's at the door?
I'm talking to the people.
How you know who's at the door? Oh.
I gotta, I gotta be with you.
Oh, okay.
I can't even get on.
You can't? No. Sit where you at? Who is sitting here, Star?
Nobody. No, I'm about to go up there.
She's about to go up.
Okay.
Make it big. Why you make it big, Star?
Oh, my God, you.
You can't, can't get on yours?
Nope.
Okay, can you guys see me?
Yep.
Okay, I had to come over to me because I don't know what's going on with my stuff.
Can they see you?
Yes, she said yes. All right. You want to go to the table or you fine here? How many people we got so far, Madam President? Vice President?
We have
We got a call?
Four council members.
Okay, well.
We have four councilmen, Bell, Edie, of course, myself and you. We have the engineer. We have code enforcement, Ken Schuster, Christine Dobson, Elijah.
Okay. Ms. Dotson there? Okay, let's get this meeting started.
Yeah.
I'm trying to I'm trying, my phone is really acting up, y'all. I hope it's not the, I thought I downloaded, you know how you have to update it?
Yeah.
Okay, Ayesha. Take my mind. You got your packet, roll it up. No, that's the one they sent.
The mayor just joined.
Okay. Wait a minute. We trying to get to these packets.
Madam President?
Yes, ma'am.
If you can't access your packet, I'll be, I can share my screen and then the packet will come up on the screen. Just so that you all have the information.
Wait a minute, Ayesha, because she just had the packet. You sent that out?
I had that on my iPad because I was looking. Yeah, wait a minute.
The packet went out yesterday. Minus the police chief's report, which went out this morning.
And I had it on here today.
All right, it's, Ayesha, can we go to your table? Because All right, I had to Yeah. Okay. All righty. Yes, ma'am, could you share your screen? Okay, we got to make this a little bit bigger. I don't know how to do that. Star?
Yeah.
Can you make this bigger, the screen? Make it bigger. Can't see the people. Okay, sorry, guys. I'm so sorry. Oh, we shouldn't be on here long. It's not that, a whole lot of stuff. But Ayesha's going to share her screen because I can't even get to my stuff.
Madam President, the agenda is loaded.
All right, thank you so much. We're going to call an order now, so can we just get say our pleasurableation and after that the three minutes, I mean, a minute of silence, a moment of silence. Thank you. You're just lighting it good. Ready, guys? To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic
For which it stands.
One nation, one nation, God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Dotson, can we get a roll call vote? I mean, I'm sorry, roll call? Sure. Counselor Bell?
Present.
Counselor Powell? Counselor Edie? Vice President Stevenson?
Oh, present.
Okay.
Present.
Pete Martino?
Martinez.
Martinez?
He's absent.
He's absent. He's attending his grandmother's, I think it's the week. Okay. President Williams? I'm present. Counselor Smith? Counselor Wuwa? Mayor Clark? Elijah Johnson?
Present.
Michael Galati?
Present.
Mr. Schuster?
Present.
Ayesha Nichols?
Present.
Tony?
Here.
And Christine Dobson is here. Okay. We had taken three minutes, public comments. So on the agenda item only, so I will ask Mr. Schuster, would you please read that out?
The agenda items?
Yes.
Sure. So the Call Win Council meeting agenda for April 15, 2021 commencing 6:00 PM. Number one, call to order. Number two, pledge of allegiance. Number three, moment of silence. For roll call. Then two, public comment, agenda items only. Three, approval of minutes, March 18, 2021. Four, finance, tax collectors' report submitted by Lisa Majahid. Treasurer Treasurer's report submitted by Johnson, Johnson and Associates. Bills list, discussions, additions, subtractions. Five, reports. Mayor's report. Solicitor's report. Public safety report. Engineers' report. DCG DCJA report. Code enforcement report. Managers' report. Six, old business. Seven, new business. Eight, public comment. Nine, would be a motion to adjourn.
Okay, thank you. So just one announcement, three minutes only to public comment and it's only on the agenda item only. So Ayesha, you can open it up to the public if there's any comments.
At this time, if any member of the public would like to comment, please raise your hand by using the raise hand feature at the bottom of your screen. Madam President, I see no hands being raised.
Okay, so we're moving.
Madam President, we have one hand raised. Oh, one second. I'm not sure how to pronounce the name, so I'm going to allow them to speak and introduce themselves.
Hello, my name is Oyindamola Adunjo. That's how you pronounce my name. It's spelled O-Y-I-N-D-A-M-O-L-A. And I just wanted to say that I will be running for a council position in Call Win. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So I'm still looking for, all right, Ayesha, is it anyone else would like to make a?
No, ma'am.
Did everyone look at the minutes from November? What is this?
From March 18.
Yeah, March 18. This is the wrong package. Because, yeah, March 18. Ayesha, you have to share your screen with me. I appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, because it was March 18.
There you are, Madam President.
All right, thank you so much. Did everyone look at that packet?
Yes. I can speak for myself.
So you said there's only four of us on here, on the phone, on this meeting, Madam Vice President?
Yes.
So I'm not sure if Councilwoman Edie saw hers. Did you see it? And I'm not sure if Councilman Bell, did you get to see your your packet?
It's a green screen.
Councilman Bell?
I'm the one doing the police department.
Yeah, the one that we need to get passed. If not, we'll just put it off until next month. It was for the approval for the minute for March 18. Oh.
Yes.
You did see it?
Yes.
Okay, well.
I've never seen that.
She hasn't seen it, so we don't really have the votes to pass that. Councilwoman Edie is still searching for hers. Anyway, we'll just skip that and do it next month. If we possibly can. Everybody did look over Lisa Majahid Tax Collection Report?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, if so, you know how to get in touch with Lisa Majahid and I'll say to the public, you could reach out to Lisa Majahid if there's any question on the finance tax collection report.
Oh, yeah, my child, definitely.
Can I ask whoever, yes, can they mute the noise in the background? And can we also this is Councilman Wuwa? Get the treasurer's report because Johnson and Johnson won't be able to stay with us long tonight because he has a very important meeting that he have to attend to. So Mr. Johnson, can you please
Yes.
give us your report?
Good evening, Council and residents that are in line. The treasurer's report for the three months ended March 31, 2021. In total, the general fund revenue and fees for the three months ended total to $752,813.11, which is above the projected revenues and fees for the quarter of 2021 by approximately 23% or $143,024. Collectively, real estate tax collections for 2021 thus far have overperformed the annual projections. The variance in total is approximately $695,502.79 or 42%. The recent uptick in the monthly prior year tax collections, tax collection fees, we were able to exceed our monthly collection goals. General fund expenses for the three months ended total to $304,041, which exceeds the projected expenses for the months by approximately 8% or $22,303. As mentioned in previous reports, the expense trends have remained the same. Many of the expense line items have exceeded the three-month projected amounts. The line items include payroll taxes, employee benefits, solicitor fees, insurances, and that category known as other that's listed in the report. The expense allocations for the three months ended as follows. Salaries and related expenses, $129,975 or 43% of the actual expenses incurred. Solicitor and legal fees, consulting and outside services, mutual aid and assurances, total to $42,196 or 14% of actual expenses incurred. The remaining 43% or $131,870 make up the expense category known as other that's listed on the report. As of the three months ended March 31, the general fund revenue and fees exceeded expenses by approximately $404,772, resulting in a net operational surplus for the reporting period. Trash and refuse fees exceeded expenses by $69,245, which reflects a surplus in the fund. Collections for current and prior year with 12% or 12 cents, rather, interest paid total to $112,500 and the expenses incurred were $43,255. Sewer fees for the month, current and prior year collections with a total amount of 70 cent interest earned, total to $307,784 and the incurred expenses totaled to $103,130. Fees and interest exceeded expenses by approximately $204,654. Lastly, the total cash in all the accounts as of Monday, April 12, totaled to $1,110,132.69. However, the reconciled balance that's in QuickBooks, total as of March 1st, totaled to $1,622.68. And if you have any additional questions, please let me know. I'm at the Borough every Wednesday and I can answer your questions there. They're between 10:30 and 11:00 and I'm there until about 1:30, 12 o'clock.
Elijah, I'm sorry. I know you have to jump off the call, but I did want clarification on one area, if you don't mind. For general fund expenses on the first page of your report, we have them exceeding the projected expenses. And then we talk about the specific line items of police salaries, wages, overtime, payroll, taxes, employee benefits, special legal or solicitor services. But I want to be clear here because I know, you know, we had to make a point of clarification before that our solicitor services are actually, fees are actually below, I mean, are actually down from last year. And also that within that general fund category is including our unemployment, our unemployment compensation reimbursement. So that's a line item that we hadn't been having to capture over the last few years, but I think is relevant and that we need to add it to the report. Ever since COVID, because that was one of our major expenses and why we are over our projected annual budget, you know, year to date.
Okay, I can make sure that's updated for the next report for next month.
Thank you.
No problem.
Before you leave, are there any questions for Mr. Johnson? No questions? Ayesha, could you please share your screen again? Mr. Johnson, thank you. If there's no question, you told them that they can come in on Wednesdays and meet with you. And they also can call the office, right?
Yeah, they can call the office as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Elijah.
All right, have a good night.
All right. Yeah, Ayesha, share it again because the meeting package that I do have I don't have, it just got
I got all this stuff.
Police report. Okay, so that's
Madam President, it's the meeting packet that was sent out yesterday afternoon around 1:00 PM. The police chief's report was sent out this morning.
Okay, so that's what I'm looking at and we don't, I don't
Right, so I need you to go back through your email to yesterday at one.
Yes. I'm at that. I'm even at the part where I just put your name in and everything that you ever sent and pop up. So the only thing that I'm having Yeah.
If you hold one second, I'll resend it to you so it'll be fresh in your inbox and then we can pull it up.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And while she's doing that, we could, oh, I can't, she just took it down. We could move on and I think it was yesterday hit that one, let's see.
I just sent it back to you. You have to click on a PDF.
Yeah, yes.
I just sent it back to your email.
Okay. I'm going to check it now.
That's the old one. That's from 12/17/20. Yeah, this is the old one. I don't have it.
All right, let me go back. She just sent me.
Oh, she sent it to you?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't have it. I have the old one.
Okay. It's download. Madam Vice President, would you like to There you go. The bills list. You guys saw the bills list. If you did, let's view this bills list and see if there's anything on there we need to go ahead and pass or hold on to.
I got three questions on the bills list.
Mayor, I hear you.
I got, I got three questions on the bills list.
Okay.
Number one, Portnoy Associates, did we pay him $6,327.12 to send out notices?
Yes.
$6,327 to send out notices?
Mayor, they are sending out delinquency notices from tax and sewer and trash delinquencies dating back to 2010. It's thousands of notices that have to be processed. However, we pay the fee upfront and we reimburse that fee at the time of At the time that of collections, so you'll, essentially the Borough will uh, have that fee returned to them.
Number two, when did we start buying salt from Upper Darby Township?
When we had the snow emergency and all of the vendors were um, were out of salt. So we didn't have a, you, so in, in two thousand and nineteen, there was never an agreement or order placed for salt. You have to sign on to the Cold Stars Agreement each year. There wasn't an, a, a salt order in two thousand and nineteen because we, we didn't see really any snow in two thousand and nineteen. So in twenty twenty, when the snow hit, we only had about maybe three tons of salt left. And so we, it was an emergency situation and all of the vend- the normal vendors were out of salt and could not get a salt in time. If you remember, those snowstorms were coming back to back. And so as a part, and it, and just as a point of um, clarification, as a part of your Act forty-seven. You know, recommendation is that we, when we can procure or share resources with uh, with neighboring boroughs that we do so. So we reached out to neighboring boroughs through our um, engineer to get salt for the emergency and Upper Darby was the only borough that could provide it.
How much salt did we get for four, uh, three thousand dollars?
About fifty tons.
Okay.
We got, altogether, we had four deliveries. Yeah, no, actually, it was, I think it was closer to eighty tons, cause the trucks hold twenty-five tons uh, per truck. And the salt, also that salt, um. That particular line item is liquid fuels reimbursable, so that money does not come out of the Borough's general revenue. It comes from our liquid fuels allocation.
Okay, my next question, best quality tire shop, six hundred dollars for tires, how many tires did they get?
Your police department?
Yes.
From my understanding, they brought six.
Six tires?
That was, you know, that's what my takeaway from the conversation I had with the chief when he submitted the invoice.
Okay. All right, I see we got another Robin Ford bill on here for three thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars.
From the police department. And, and again, that's a, that's an item I, I would ask you to get, you know, discuss further with Chief Martinez, but from my understanding, cause I did question it. Um, there, that's. Part of the invoice, cause there's two payments on there. Um, about twenty-seven hundred dollars. Of that um, invoice was for the steering wheel, um, the steering column in the one vehicle. So if you remember, um. Yeah, so that's, that's exactly what that payment is for. And then there's a, a second invoice. I could look that up, but the chief will have the information as well.
Yeah, I, I know about the steering wheel, because I, I told him, we couldn't get it nowhere but to, but I know, I know. Uh, that's not the figure that he quoted me, that's what I'm asking about Robin Ford.
Yeah, initially, I think they actually quoted us higher, around four thousand dollars and we got the, um, yeah.
It went down.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay. But they got six tires.
I believe they got six tires.
Okay, I'm at to check with the chief and find out how many tires they actually got. All right, thank you, that's it.
You're welcome, sir.
So we do have their invoice, right, um, Ms. Nichols?
Yes, I just, you know, I, I'm not in a habit of bringing them home.
Uh, yeah, but I'm know it's in the office.
For the mayor's review.
Right, right. Any more um. Questions and concerns on the um, bills list? Nobody have any questions? All right, can I get somebody to make a motion to pass the bills list? Or?
I'll make that motion. President, Vice President Stevenson?
Counselor Bell.
Counselor Bell? Counselor Powell? Vice President Stevenson?
Yes.
Counselor Wuwa? He trying to get on, so don't worry about it. Okay, Counselor Smith? Counselor Edie?
Yes.
President Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries? Um, Mister, um. So did motions, emotions carry? Okay, Mister, um. I'm sorry, Councilman. Smith saying that um, we can't get in, Ms. Nichols, could we let him in? I don't know how he's trying to get in, but. And while we waiting on him, we'll just move on, skip on down to these reports. Mayor?
Uh, last, last month, we had a uh, water ski donated to the police department. Um, by a resident of Cowen. That's my, that's my final report.
Was that the one Mister Brookes was talking about that he said might need some repairs?
Yes.
I think it was the seat on it or something?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. All right, Mr. Brown. Yes, yes ma'am.
I just received a uh, communication from uh, Councilman Wuwa. He's still trying to get on. I forwarded to him the link.
Okay, that's okay. We're not even going to worry about that. May we get the uh, solicitors' report, Mister Schuster?
There is no report this evening, Madam President.
Madam President?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I wanted to note that Councilman Smith has joined the meeting. Christine, if you can note that in a minute. Okay, thank you.
Sure thing. And Mister, um, I'm sorry, Chief, um, Martinez is out because of his, the passing of his grandmother, so we won't get a report from him unless, and. Mayor, did he leave you anything besides what we found in our package?
No, he didn't.
All right, thank you.
Madam President, the, the chief's report was submitted this morning to all of council members.
Okay, so that's, that's, you got that report, all right. Engineer report, um, Mister Mike Galante, please.
Good evening, uh, Mayor Council. Uh, I just have a brief report for you this evening. Um. Not sure if it was uh, announced at the last meeting, but now we received the two grants uh, from the county for Tribet Place and one for Walnut Street. Uh, for sanitary sewer improvements. Uh, Tribet Place is in design, Walnut Street, we're looking for a matching grant. Um, the D C E D funding that we received, we're at the final phase of that project, working with the Borough Manager and Keystone Lighting. On uh, installation of the LED fixtures within Basaco Park. Uh. Tree trimming and removals uh, coordinated with uh, you know, there's been some issue with tree trimming in the uh, Borough. And uh, we coordinated with Pico, uh, their government affairs rep, uh, got them in touch with uh, the Borough Manager. And now, you know, they're, they're coordinating now and uh, I know they had a conference call today and um. You know, let's hopefully we get Pico out there to start, you know, trimming back some of the trees around the power lines. Um. There, there's also another tree um, located on Fourth Street that's located on. Um, Borough property, it actually fell and now it's on a residential property, so we're working on uh, waiting quotes to get the hazard removed. Uh, right now, it's, it's somewhat tough to get quotes. A lot of tree contractors are really busy, but we expect to have a quote and get it removed very soon. Um. The residential street light program, uh, I can let Ayesha give a little more update on that, but I kinda, you know, we're, we're working with uh, Mike Fuller. And working on trying to get that project uh, finalized. Um. Uh, you know what? I skipped over the um, the capital improvement plan, so. Since the last meeting, uh, we actually had a conference call with the Borough Manager at D C E D. Uh, they requested that I talk to council about working on a capital improvement plan. What we thought would be a good idea would be to do a five-year capital improvement plan where we can um. You know, develop a list of capital improvements for the next five years, dealing with our roads, sewers, storm sewers. Uh, needs within the community, develop that written plan, so we have it on the books and when, and we can look for grants and funding. Uh, to, you know, get the Borough, uh, you know, moving out of Act forty-seven. I believe this is a, this is a request that we need to do as part of Act forty-seven. Have a capital improvement plan. Uh, I've done them in other communities. Um, I have a format. So what I'll do is I will provide a letter proposable, proposal with the scope of services uh, for council consideration. Um. The uh, the recently completed projects, you know, we did, we always do the annual M S four. The P R P plan and the chapter ninety-four report. The P R P plan sent out the D E P, we expect to get that uh, notice of intent and that permit from them. Um, and you'll see on council agenda tonight that um, there is uh, the Penn Vest uh, grant uh, submission. So what I'd like to do is, given the fact that we are in Act forty-seven, we're still in there, I want to make application to Penn Vest. Try to get uh, items that, work done as part of our uh, pollution reduction plan. Uh, so that it's not a burden to the Borough later. So um, the grant itself, I think we would qualify for grant versus loan. But um, you know, I'd like to make application for that and, you know, I would do that with my general services. Uh, you know, it wouldn't be any additional cost for me to make application uh, to the Borough. Um. And then that also falls in line with the uh, the capital improvement plan. Uh, chapter ninety-four report's been submitted. Um, and then, you know, the only other two projects are um, you know, we, we're doing the um. The, the Tribet Place and Basaco Park, so we're waiting on approval from the county uh, as part of environmental review, cause Basaco Park's located in a floodplain. Once we get the approval, I can advertise the project uh, for construction, but right now, we're still waiting uh, for that environmental review to be completed. I anticipate it to be completed uh, sometime this month, is what I've been told. So that's my report. If there's any questions, uh, feel free to let me know.
I have one.
I have one question. My question is, that tree that's on Fourth Street, that's, it, it's not the county's? It belongs to Cowen?
I looked at the public access maps and that land says, that land is uh, indicated as being owned by the Borough of Cowen.
So. I, I, I've just got one more question. The one that was on Tribet Place last, um, well, this year earlier. And it fell down. That was the county's property, but this tree here, it seemed like it's still on the same line. It's not.
I remember that tree. I think it fell during the Hurricane Isaiah's.
Yes.
Yes, uh, I believe that tree was on the private property, cause you gotta remember. Um, on those alleyways, the people own back past the alleyway. So I think that tree that you're referencing was actually on private property, cause their property lines stepped back. Uh, I'll get the documents and provide some additional backup on that.
Okay, so Cowen will, uh, this question might be for Ken with that, because she, this lady had that tree cut down that fell on it. And I think she had a bill for like five hundred and something and she was trying to bring it in so that um, the Borough will pay for it. So are we reliable for that bill too, plus cutting down this tree?
Madam President, Ken, I'm sorry, Madam President and Ken, I, I've spoken to the resident and that's a conversation that I think we should have offline.
Okay, okay.
Ken, I don't, Ken, now Ken can give his legal opinion, but there's, I haven't had a conversation.
We can, we can talk off, um, I'll speak with Ken tomorrow. All right, any, any questions for um, engineer?
I, I had questions, but I had questions in reference to the same exact thing, that tree on Fourth Street. Cause I've got ten calls about it from the resident. Okay, that's, but it's been answered, but I still want to talk offline about. The tree that she had cut down because of the tree that was on Cowen property, fell on her tree. So I, I still want to be in that uh, loop when y'all talk about that, because I think it needs to be talked about. The bill.
Mayor, I'll set up a conference call with uh, Ayesha, Council President, yourself and I tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Um, Mister Locke on the phone, um, Ms. Nichols, Mister Locke there?
No, he's, no, he is not.
All right, they, he, he submitted a report, so, hey. Tony, are you ready, engineer? I mean, code enforcer, Tony.
Thank you, everyone.
You're welcome. Tony.
Uh, I'm ready. There's really not.
Madam President?
Other than what was my report.
Excuse me, um, yes.
Um, Councilman Wuwa's online. He says he's muted. I don't know if that's something that the Ayesha can handle. I'm, I'm just letting you know.
All right, so Ken, um.
Madam President, I, I don't know. Where he would be.
Right, okay.
I don't, I don't see him.
Did he come in the panel?
No.
My name, my name would be up there twice?
The panel is, no, it's, it's not.
Okay.
He may have called in. If anyone knows his phone number, I could, I could cross-reference it and allow, and promote him to panelists.
She, Jackie's on, um. Vice President Stevenson has sent it to you, um, Ms. Nichols, so we're gonna move on.
Miss, I'm sorry, Ms. Nichols, which numbers do you want? The last four?
That's fine.
Three, two, two, three.
Okay, so he's a caller and I wouldn't have known that that was him.
Thank you.
And. I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Madam President, it will not allow me to promote him to panelist as a caller, however, I can't allow him to speak.
Right, okay, that's fine. Mister Totacular, are you ready to give your report now?
I, I am still here, Madam President. Uh, I don't have any changes from the report that I filed the other day. We um, we have been contacted by the folks who want to open the dispensary down at five-twenty-two. But they are very far away from having any sort of plans for submission. And there is no movement on the property there at Water and Front Street, at Front and Main, Water and Main. Um, last I heard, I had a conversation, Mike and I were there with Alex from Catania Engineering. And they were going to prepare a plan for submission from Mike's review, but we haven't gotten anything in.
Okay, so, so how long will they have this dirt sitting up there piled up there like that? Did they? Say anything? Will it flatten it down or something? Cause that, that's, that is horrible.
Well, we actually told them they need to provide us with the plan before they do anything else on the property. So hopefully, within the next couple of weeks, we get the plan from Catania. Mike could take a look at it and see whether or not it's acceptable and we can get that ground stabilized.
Okay, are there any questions?
Tony, did they submit, I'm sorry, Tony, did they submit um. Permits for the tree removal and excavation, because we don't have any in the office and I know that was a question that Councilwoman Powell. Had raised, and so I just want to be able to get back to her with that information.
I don't actually see a permit in Cowen for tree removal. As far as the, the dirt that they moved around, they were, they did not have one, they were told to stop, and that's where we are right now. And they don't, they can't obtain a permit until Mike were to approve plans for the ground and what they want to do with it.
So when you say you don't see a tree permit for Cowen, do you mean that Cowen doesn't? We don't have permits for folks that are taking down trees, or you don't see a permit for this particular contractor on file?
We don't have, we don't have a permit.
So why is there no permit application for tree removal?
Cause council never approved an ordinance requiring one.
How far back this goes?
Whoa, stop, stop. Why, why did the guy across the street from Bell Hall have to get a permit to take down those two trees and they don't need a permit to take trees down?
I don't remember anyone requiring them to take down a, a permit for the trees. They're required to get a permit to repair the sidewalk.
So that's what that was for.
They didn't have to get a permit to, to take the trees now?
No.
Okay, well, I'm gonna check with them.
And Mayor, that is probably why they um, messed up the sidewalk that day, that's the streak that day. Remember, they didn't have a permit, because if they had a permit, Tony, none would have knew about it. And I believe they had.
The, the, the tree surgeon had a permit. They found out later that he did not have any insurance when that tree. The, the, the tree surgeon had a permit. They found out later that he did not have any insurance when that tree came down on the street. Am I right?
There's no way that we would have given anyone a permit without insurance. So there was no permit issue.
They found out later that his insurance had expired when that, that tree trunk came down and put it in, in the street. That's when it was discovered that he didn't, he didn't have any insurance.
Mayor, I think I remem, I think I remember. Remember the same details, yeah, Tony.
He had to have a permit to take the tree down. Didn't have an insurance.
Uh, Mayor, I did not issue a permit to, to take down a tree.
Somebody, I'll check with the resident to find out if they had to get a permit. Because the, the discussion was made out in the street when that trunk came down and put a sinkhole in the street. It was found out later that the guy did not have insurance, his insurance had expired.
Tony, are we talking about a permit to perform work in general or a permit to take trees down?
A permit to take a tree down.
Okay, would the tree surgeon be required to get a permit to work? Not to take the trees down, but just to work in the borough and provide insurance?
Not unless he was doing something other than taking a tree down.
So I looked in the codes books and I did not find an ordinance requiring permits for tree removals or tree trimming. I have, I am in the process of drafting and such an ordinance. I've looked at different municipalities. And my recommendation would be that in the absence of us finding an ordinance. That we pass an ordinance so that in fact permits are required before trees are removed or trimmed.
I think that's an excellent idea.
Yes.
We can schedule an executive session. I will circulate a draft ordinance. And we can have an executive session with the mayor and council and discuss the best ordinance and manner in which to proceed.
So that means a person can come in Cowen and do some work without insurance because this guy didn't have any.
No, it means that a person can come into Cowen and cut a tree. That's.
Without insurance?
No, he's saying he had to have the insurance, but it was no permit for, we don't have permits for trees. Am I right? That's what's being said, Ken?
That's what's being said, but there are many circumstances where probably there's not an ordinance for work to be performed. And under that scenario, it wouldn't be required to have insurance. So we may want to look at that issue as well.
Okay.
Whether any work whatsoever, whether there's an ordinance or not, requires insurance. Tony, do you understand what I'm saying?
Yes, exactly.
Another question is, uh. The code enforcement, it doesn't contain, don't have anything to do with a tree. Let me, let me ask you this question. If, if you're a homeowner. And you don't work in your own house and you're doing the work yourself, you need a permit?
Yes.
Why?
This is not inclusion for a homeowner to not receive. Building Code doesn't say because you own a house, you don't need a permit. It says you have to get one. Now, it says you have the right to work in your own house. With, with or without insurance, but you still need a permit to make sure that the work is done correctly because. You're not going to be the last owner of that house and the next person has to be protected as if it were a contractor doing the same job.
Well, who's the sake of me the only owner of that house?
Because we're all going to go at some point in time.
Oh, true.
Isn't that, Tony, isn't that true for as long as. Work applicable to the building code? Right? So if you're painting or doing small like items around your house, that doesn't, isn't covered in the building code, right?
That's correct. Painting, wallpapering, floor covering, drapes. Carpeting, I mean, none of that is covered under the building code, but anything that requires an inspection. Which would be any kind of plumbing, mechanical, electrical, structural, they all require permits.
So in other, in other words, if you, you got a ceramic tile floor. And you need to replace some of that ceramic tile, you have to get a permit to do that?
Some or all?
I said replace some of that ceramic tile.
So if you've got like four or five ceramic tiles missing, no, you don't need a permit for that.
But if you do the whole kitchen floor, you would have to get a permit, right?
I'm not talking about the whole kitchen floor.
No, Mayor, I'm just asking.
The resident, resident I'm speaking for was replacing some broken towels in her bathroom. And they put her through hell about getting a permit and she was the one doing it. Okay, I'm, that, that's all I have to say because some people in this town got to get permits for things and some people don't.
The only people in Cowen that need to get a permit are those that we find. Because there's a lot of people in town to take your advice and don't bother coming in.
Wow.
My advice?
Hey, yours, because you tell people don't get a permit.
We're not, we're not going to go there tonight, so we're just.
When did you ever hear me tell somebody not to get a permit?
The people that come in and tell us that the mayor told us they don't need to get a permit.
That's bull, that's bull job. I don't, I always, I stop.
Mr. Totagler and, um.
People on the weekend from working.
Let's, let's not go there today. We can take that up at another time.
Well, we're going to take it up now. He said, well, let's take it up.
We're going to move on and ask.
I stopped people on the weekend and called Tim that people.
Managers report. Ms. Nichols, may we please, first of all, first of all, are there any more questions for, for code enforcement? If there's any more questions, then we will move on and ask that, um. Ms. Nichols, do you have a manager report for us so we can move along?
Yes, Madam President. So I'd just like to expand upon some of the items that, um. We're discussing some of the other reports, uh, because we, the work is a collaboration. The PICO. In regards to the PICO tree trimming effort that Mike spoke of. We've received a number of in-office complaints regarding overgrown trees hanging on power lines. Throughout the borough. So what we're doing right now is trying to work on an annual, what would be an annual maintenance program. With PICO so that they would come out every year at the same time and cut back these trees to ensure that the power lines, um. That they're not impeding upon the power lines and that none of the lines will, you know, will be weighted down and, and fall. So I should know more what that, with that annual project will look like by next week and I'll send that out to, um. To members of council via email because you will then see PICO on the streets and, um, cutting back the trees. We also got, just received information from Verizon. If you remember a few months back, I, I want to say it was Comcast that was in upgrading, in the town upgrading lines. Verizon reached out to us and said that they will also be needing to come into the borough to upgrade some of their. Equipment through the right of way. I guess it's a right of way. Ken, you can correct me if I'm wrong. However, unlike Comcast, Verizon. Has asked to schedule a meeting with the solicitor, engineer, code enforcement and members of council. To discuss what the project would look like, whether or not they need permits and what, um. What streets they would need to block off during the time that they hit, they're here upgrading their lines. So I will also send out a meeting invite to everyone, um, once Verizon provides me with some. You know, some of their available times and dates. As for the residential streetlight procurement program, we did submit, I think, a number of residents were. Asking about the project and when it was going to take place. So we submitted to Liquid Fuels, that project. Has three sources of funding and so it's one project, but three different funders. So we have to. Meet with folks separately and get certain approvals. So part, a portion of the project, which includes. The upgrades to the lighting at Basaco Park is funded through D C E D. However. There's also a portion that's funded through Penn Dot. And so Penn Dot has some very strict criteria around how you spend liquid fuels monies. And there were a number of areas, I'll say, on the street list that the project manager provided. That Penn Dot. Penn Dot deemed as alleyway. So I know in the borough, we talk about Apple Street and Pear Street and, um. Plum, there's a Plum Street, there's Palmer. So when we submitted the street list, Penn Dot kicked it back to us. Because on their map, these are considered alleyways. So we had to go back, do another reassessment from the first survey, indicate how many lights were on those particular, um. Streets or alleys and then move those costs over to general fund cost. So it increased the general fund cost about. A little less than two thousand dollars and I have those amounts. Those amounts are actually in Michael's report. What the new costs are, but the total overall project cost is around forty-two thousand dollars. And the borough is, I'm sorry, y'all, that's my dog. She's acting up tonight. The borough is in a good financial standing, so the twelve thousand dollars. That we would have to cover out of our general fund would come out of what we allocated for, I'm sorry. Um, our allocation for the American Recovery, from the American Recovery Plan money.
So, um, Ms. Nichols, that actually was only what, three, was it three streets that, or was it more?
It was a total of five.
Five, it was five?
Yeah. However, we, we were able to keep some of the lights under liquid fuels, those that were located on intersections. So. For instance, there's a light on a pear that I think is at the end of Pear and Walnut. So because it's at the end of Pear and Walnut and not in the center of the alley, we were able to keep lights like that on for under the liquid fuels funding.
Okay.
As Mike said, I'm so sorry. As Mike said, we're working on a capital improvement plan. And I think it's, it's important to note, within that plan, we'll be looking at regular sewer, sanitary sewer maintenance, regular road maintenance. Like annual, identifying annual maintenance. I think in the past, the borough had been in a position where we were responding to. You know, these catastrophic events, sewer backups or, you know, sewer breaks and things like that. And we want to be. We are now in a position where we can be more proactive about. About our built infrastructure and really start to plan out some of these projects and then identify as Michael's got the funding. For those projects. The one project that Mike didn't mention was the detention basin and that's a big one. Mike, you, you forgot about that one, but that is what impacts those residents along Ellis Avenue and those businesses along Ellis Avenue. Ellis Avenue. So we'll actually be looking at that as a part of the capital improvement plan as well. And that's the end of my report.
Okay, I, I have one question and that was for, um, Mike. Mike, I got a question, um. Is, is based on the summer coming up. So is it anything feasible? To put down on these streets where they're speeding so fast that I'm so afraid somebody's kid going to get killed? Or they're going to run into somebody's house or something? So, I mean, is it anywhere that liquid fuels could, monies could come out of that to fix these streets where they? Having road races?
Yeah, I mean, I could go inside the, you know, I followed, we followed a Penn Dot Traffic Calming Handbook. Um, and we could do speed humps, depending on the availability of funding.
Okay.
Also, they're, they're contingent upon the type of roadway. So if your roadway's too steep, they're not a good alternative. But I'd be more than happy to look at those locations, see if there's other means other than a speed hump that we could do. Uh, maybe additional striping or whatever and, you know.
Rumble markings?
I'm sorry.
The rumble marks?
Yeah, rumble, well, the problem with them is when you put them in residential areas, they end up shaking houses and it becomes more of a nuisance. You know, I know the locations, so these are similar, similar locations where we're talking about putting stop signs. And, yeah, I mean, we, I have that all written up in previous reports. If, you know, I could get with Ayesha to see what kind of funding we have. And see if we can use some liquid fuels to do some of those projects.
Okay, because yeah, it's, it's dangerous, it's too much, okay.
I know the police are, you know, somewhat staffed, but sometimes enforcement, having the police around, it tends to help people slow down. You know, they can't be everywhere at once, so.
So true. Maybe the mayor could work on that and see what he can get done because they are really coming through here. Like crazy, Mayor. So maybe you could speak with chief and see whatever could be done about that. More patrol, sir?
Coming through where? You didn't have, you never mentioned the street.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. It will actually start at the top of Second Street. Am I wrong, Madam President? And it comes all the way through Fourth Street. They don't even stop at the stop sign that's up at the top of the hill where Judge Gannon used to live. They just come through like.
Mayor, I'm, I'm sorry, Mayor, we, uh, we did a walkthrough with, um, Mr. Galante last year. And there were several spots all throughout the borough where there has been, um. Issues with speeding and running stop signs.
Well, there's an issue with running stop signs throughout the borough.
That's what I said. I said throughout the borough.
But the, the police department has been writing tickets like crazy for stop signs for the last five months. I mean, writing tickets. I see them constantly stopping cars all the time. But they have, uh, I'm going to speak with the chief to change them up because they're only concentrating on four or five stop signs. When they should be concentrating on other stops.
Right.
They should take, uh, take turns on different stop signs. The ones that are paying attention to is like Walnut Street. Fourth and Walnut, Third and, uh, Third and Walnut. Around a bend coming down the end of Walnut, but they need to like over the other side of the bridge and. Chestnut Street because they come down these streets like, I stand out every morning. I, I could count ten cars go through the stop sign in less than an hour.
Right.
Mayor, they, Mayor, Mayor, they also go through the stop sign at, uh, at Third and Spruce, right in front of the police department every day.
I know, I, I have been parked there and seen them. You know, but, but cops can't be everywhere, you know, like, like, they can't be everywhere, but they have to change up.
Right, right.
They pay a lot of attention to, like they hide behind the garage right there on Walnut, was it Walnut Street and Fourth? But you already know they're going to be there. When you come down the street, you know it. So they got to change up.
And just, just as a matter of reference, Madam President, um, the chief and I did speak, um, we didn't. Michael's report, so Michael's report from last month and month prior has those, have the streets in there that, um. Madam Vice President spoke about, that Mike did look, that did the traffic study on. So I'll send that back out to everyone so you can see what he worked, what he's working on. It just wasn't on this month's report. But I did meet with the chief last, I, I want to say it was two weeks ago regarding, um. Fourth and Pine and the stop sign at the bottom of the bridge. So I know he did say that he would beef up some of the, um. Police efforts right there so that as folks are coming down that hill, if they're, you know, if they're unaware that the stop sign is at the end. He would put police cars there to be able to, um, to enforce and anyone running a stop sign. So I'll give him, I'll also provide him with Mike's list.
Okay, so, um. Ms. Nichols, um, Councilman Smith said, could you please let him back in? I don't know where, but I see him on the screen, but he's saying he can't. See. Okay, so there's no, oh, no old business, um, now. So let's go jump right into this new business real quick. And, um. That, that's, that's Penn Vest, right? Authorization to approve for Penn Vest Stormwater and Sanitation Sewer Grant Application. That's you, Mr. Galante, right?
Yes.
You touch bases on that, right?
Yeah, so basically what, what I'd like to do is try to apply for that grant to meet the requirements of our Pollution Reduction Plan. With one of them being managing that basin down there on Ellis. Uh, if we can get that re-creation, rehabilitated, converted into a bio retention basin. Of our pollution reduction requirements right there. Then I also want to apply for sanitary sewer upgrades, um, you know, Walnut. Uh, and also other locations, which I'll detail in the application. Given the fact that we're in Act forty-seven, uh, you know, our sewer, uh, you know. Bills do not, is, they pretty much just cover our costs. We probably would be eligible for a grant. But I mean, I can't guarantee that, but I think it's worth applying.
Okay.
Yep.
So listen, so Ken, um. We just need a, we just need to get approval for that, right? Nothing else needed. Okay, so can I get him, um?
I'm sorry, Madam President, do we need to open this up to the public before we, um?
It probably is a wise idea to open it up to the public, to have public dialogue, though not mandatory.
Okay, so all right, so, so I Esa, can you open up to any questions that the public may have on this Stormwater and Sanitary Sewer Grant? It's a grant.
At this time, if there are any members of the public who would like to ask a question regarding the grant application, please raise your hand. There's one person who raised their hand. Hold one second.
Okay.
Yes, Ms. Straighten, you're on with the council.
Good evening, everyone. Um, my question is, I'm a resident and a business owner at one um Ellis Avenue, and I just wanted to know, how um soon will you know if you'll be approved for the grant?
Gotta apply for it first.
Well, we would, first we gotta make application, so I would make the application. Um, and then um it can take some time to get approval. Um, I don't have that exact, exact date on me, but I can bring that to the next meeting.
Um, another question would be, um, what are we looking at for this coming year, storms that may come through? What types of supports are gonna be in place for the residents? My um property, I don't own the property, I'm a renter, um, was affected by the last year's uh storm, so, and I'm a little afraid of looking towards July and August.
So um, I, I'm gonna ask Mike, is this um grant that you're trying to get, would, it would be feasible for something like that, right?
Um, it'll, it'll help resolve some of the uh drainage issues that we have down on Ellis. Property's located within a floodplain, uh, I don't think it will resolve the floodplain problem. That's a much bigger uh grant, and also requires um a lot more um engineering. Uh, and also, when you, when you're talking about the floodplain itself, I mean, it's you know, ultimately, there's, there's properties down there are in a floodplain, and when you mitigate flooding in a floodplain, you gotta do an analysis to make sure you're not flooding someone else further upstream or downstream. So that takes a much bigger uh study. We've had conversations with uh Pima regarding that. Any grants with Pima would require a twenty-five percent match. Not to say that we can't make application, but it's something that we would have to do more analysis on. Um, but Pima has mentioned in the past, after Hurricane Isaiah, that it might be worth, you know, when a, when a grant round comes up to make application.
Right.
Or FEMA Pima grant versus uh Penn Vest.
Okay, another question, another question. Um last year, when we were hit, um, it was, I guess, a surprise to everyone. And I just really wanted to know, what type of plan do y'all have in place for this year? Like, is there anything that um we could do as a, as a community to um to see our way through this better than last year? Cuz last year was a mess.
Well, from what we were told, the only thing that we could do, because Darby um are the rescue area, that we can only have our residents either come to our borough hall till we gather up all, and then they go to Dart.
Madam President, also, and, and you're correct, that's that's how we were advised during the August fourth event. Um, I have spoken to the chief, and since he's come on board, and I don't know if he's brought it up to the mayor, but the county, um the county, the Cowan Borough currently does not have an emergency management coordinator. And that will be the role of someone who was in, like a police chief or fire chief position. Um, so I know that having a, a local emergency management coordinator, who would be, you know, instituting a plan and um, and heading up any efforts during a major weather event um under the mayor, under the mayor's direction um would be beneficial, and I believe it's something that, that we're, you know, that the chief will broach with the mayor shortly. Because that was something, based on the August fourth event, he came in in October, that was something that I did um, mention to him when he came in, it was a priority here, Ms. Straighten.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tanya.
You're welcome.
So we need to make, we need to put that on the table, get um a motion to authorize to approve for the Penn Dot investment. So can somebody please, or make a motion if there's no other discussion on it?
I'll make the motion, Jackie Stevenson.
I'll second that motion. Okay. Counselor Bell?
Yes.
Counselor Powell? Counselor Edie?
Yes.
Vice President Stevenson?
Yes.
Counselor Wu Wa?
Yes.
President Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries. And the next, the next item on our um new business was authorization to allow the borough manager to establish electronic bill payment system for the following months. Um, which will include independent Blue Cross, Vex, is it WEX or VEX, and um, United Concordia and Pico, Aqua and um R C N. So she needs to get authorization, so we can do it electronically.
Um, Madam President, could the um
You could discuss.
Manager explain why uh this is necessary?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Um, so currently, the borough operates on a three signer check system. Um, which takes usually a few days prior, I, I mean, following council meeting to get all signatures. Um, however, it hadn't been a problem up until we started to experience delays in mail from the US Postal System. So what occurred over the last few months is that we've had, we, you currently are responsible for your retiree, your police retiree medical benefits. Um, bills that are like your fire hydrant bills and things of that nature, and because the mail was delayed, we have, we were receiving bills in a month late, you know, and after the due date, we actually got a cancellation notice for the fire hydrant, where they were gonna shut the fire hydrants off. I don't even know how that's legally possible. Um, but also with insurance benefits and things of that nature. So to ensure that these particular, and these are all pre-approved items, which means council had voted in the past to have these items be paid um on a preapproval basis. So we're just asking now that they can be paid automatically. And that way, if there's a delay in mail, you know, we're not getting retirees who are um experiencing loss of insurance. We're not getting shut-off notices for your fire hydrants, because we need the fire hydrants in the event of public safety, um, in the event of a fire. And also for the gas, which is WEX. Um, these are considered, what, what are considered credit accounts. So if your account, if the account exceeds the credit limit, they shut the card off, even though it's public safety. You know, you can't have police officers who can't access gas.
Right.
So these are things that have been recurring, I, even before, you know, we came on board. So this is a way to resolve that. By having these bills be paid automatically. So we ensure that the police officers can always get gas. We ensure that there's always water available in the event of a fire. We ensure that your retired employees um, police officers continue to get, have medical insurance.
Right.
And we mitigate any future risk and liability if any of those things fail, if any of those things should ever happen.
Uh, but uh, as far as the uh, uh, paying the gas bill for the police cars, if you're, you're paying a bill, it is automatically paid. We don't know whether somebody's stealing gas or not. If we don't know the building went higher than it's supposed to be.
No, mayor, that's, no, mayor, that's not, that's incorrect, cuz we would still get the invoice, and we would still the invoices come and they show which unit used which amount of gas. So the, each person who has a gas cart has to log in either a vehicle number or a personal ID number. So we do get those reports. The question is, I mean, it's not that we can't, we won't have accountability, it's just that we won't get cut off.
Okay.
So, council, are there any questions on the?
I'm sorry, can you just read the list of names of the vendors again?
Ms. Nichols, read the list of the names, would you please? Cuz you have.
Yes, ma'am. So the vendors, which are your, which are your pre-approved vendors, are Independence Blue Cross, WEX, United Concordia, and Independence Blue Cross and United Concordia are the medical insurance carriers. Pico, Aqua, and R C N.
What is Walt?
Thank you. Say that again, mayor.
What is WEX?
WEX is, that's the gasoline provider.
Okay.
Any more questions for the borough manager on this situation? So then I get a motion to approve authorization to allow the borough manager to establish electronic bill payment.
I'll make that motion.
Who's seconded?
Council, Councilwoman Edie.
Got it. Counselor Bell?
Yes.
Counselor Powell? Counselor Edie?
Yes.
Vice President Stevenson?
Yes.
Counselor Wu Wa?
Yes.
President Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank, thank you guys. Um public comments, um, Ms. Nichols, I just want to remind the public, this three minutes, um three minutes only. So we cut you off, we're not being rude, we're just trying to give everybody a chance that wants to say something. So, Ms. Nichols, you can open it up to the public now.
At this time, if there are any members of the public that would like to make public comment, please raise your hand. And you'll be allowed to address council in order that the hands were raised. Ms. Williams, you can go down and address the council.
Good evening, everyone. I have a question. On February day, February eighteenth meeting, when there was a swearing in and the mayor refused to swear in um persons for the Civil Service Committee. Um, we had Chris McGeechee that was sworn in as Chris McGeechee. Born the minutes that was approved on March eighteenth, her name appeared to be Chris McGee. So how is that possible to swear in a person under one name and the minutes say another name?
What is her name?
You, me, Chris McGeechee or Chris McGee?
Does anybody know her real name?
Yes. But that's not the issue. I think what happened, um, I think, um, um, Ms. Williams, what was the date of the um the minutes that you say it shows Chris McGee?
Eighteen.
You, it was for the minutes of February eighteen that you approved on March eighteenth, and the exact time that she was sworn in was one twenty, an hour and twenty minutes and thirty-eight seconds. Okay?
Okay, thank you. Um, so so
Go ahead.
Council has to take some responsibility. I know I do. And when we receive the um minutes, um, we should carefully review them to make sure that the spelling is correct. We've had situations where we've received minutes, and we have in the past, you know, reached out to the, the secretary or the borough manager to, to explain that there was an issue with regard to the um, the minutes, the spelling of a person's name, et cetera. Um, I think because of the um, the, Ken, I'm gonna defer to you after I say this. I think because it, it was recorded via Zoom, um, that would stand to stand in place of the written minutes. And we could go back and make the edits and spell her name correctly. Ken, what do you think?
Uh, my opinion would be that the the name should obviously be verified properly. We should review the minutes, and if the minutes have to be amended and corrected, they should be invoked on at a subsequent meeting.
Thank you. Thank you.
What's that? I'm sorry, Pat.
Okay, so that's where I have a problem if, if we're if we're swearing, if you guys are swearing people in over Zoom, the correct spelling should be in front of the person that is swearing them in.
Okay, yes. Thank you.
I'm asking Ken a question that I didn't get an answer, and I'm being cut off.
Well, I, I, again, I will listen to the recording. I will review the transcript of the meeting. Um, if I determine that the swearing was improper for some reason, uh, number one, we can recommend a re-swearing in, or number two, we can merely amend the minutes to reflect the proper spelling of the name. Pat, I'm not sure if that answers.
Thank you, Ken, and this rude person, but yes, it did. And the president is very rude, but you guys have a nice day.
What happened? What I do? All right, so.
Live, that's what you did, you're live, and we can hear everything you're saying in the background.
I'm talking about a, a number. Well, I'm not even going there, but anyway, um were there any more um comments or questions from the public, um, Ms. Nichols?
Are there any other members of the public who, who would like to address council at this time? Please raise your hand.
So that's why I wrote this right here.
There are no other, there are no other hands raised, Madam President.
Okay, may I get um um, a motion, can I get a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I'll make that. I'll second, Jackie Stevenson.
Okay, can we get uh? All in favor? The motion carries, good night.